I'd like to call the meeting to order. Deputy Clerk, please take your call.
Dave Abdallah?
Here.
Bill Bazey?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Here.
Ray Musket?
Here.
Tom Wenzel?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Nancy Byers to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve Order of Business August 28, 2018, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of the Minutes, the minutes from the regular meeting of August 14, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah?
I move that we approve the minutes from August 14, 2018, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council meeting as submitted in Item 4A.
Second?
Supported by Councilman -- I'm Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Next, we have Public Hearings and Comments on Agenda Items. From the public, we ask you, limited to two minutes, and state your name and address.
My name's Nathan Sowers. I'm at 25305 Andover Drive. Here I go beating a dead horse again. This flood, every year since 2014, my basement has flooded. The street has flooded. I have human feces in my basement. I was told many, many times by the city workers that the two sewers are actually separated.
Okay. At this time, I don't want to interrupt you, but this is for items on the agenda. Where you want to come up is number 14, for comments from the public. And I'll let you come up then, and you can actually talk longer then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, we have Public Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Musket?
I move that council approve Current Claims 6-1 through 6-32.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Again, we just keep going. This is going back to some of this issue, and one of the residents brought up with flooding. I have concern with, it was mentioned that one of the lawn companies that we, it was too late in the year to bring somebody onboard, and yet, you know, we show another company on these invoices, there's no RFP, was never sent out for quote again. Also, for the, the company's doing the sewer cleaning, I've actually visited few sites, you know, after the last rain, and the one resident that was up here, he called me up. I went checked. It's right by Dairy Queen on Berger, and the next street over Hubble. When it rains, there's so much water in that area that it's actually going in their exhaust system when they park on the street. And I don't know where this Nagel company or the company's actually doing the work, you know, what sewers are they cleaning? But they're not cleaning the entire city sewers, so I still have a problem with that. We need to send that for an RFP to a company that can go throughout the city like they're supposed to.
Mr. Blackburn, would you like to address these?
Nagel Construction that does our sewer cleaning, they clean the sanitary sewers. What you were looking at is a storm sewer. The sanitary sewers is what's connected to the house. We have to clean every sewer in this city every five years. Every sewer has to be cleaned. The sewer's broken up into, the city's broken up into five different sections, and each section's cleaned on a year-to-year basis, so we cover the whole city in five years. So Nagel Construction does the sanitary sewers, not the storm sewers, two separate systems.
Who does the storms?
Usually, the Highway Department does the storms.
Our own guys?
Nagel has done the storms if we've been backed up, but they're so busy on sanitary sewers that they're not, we usually do storm sewers.
Okay.
Okay. Also, we still have not found the root cause of who's dumping grease or dumping whatever they're dumping in our sewers. And I just can't believe that, this is the 21st century, and we still don't know, we can't detect who's dumping garbage down our sewers. And, you know, we have issues with rats. You know, I've gotten multiple calls this week alone with rat issues, and yet, you know, I mean, that's, that's a, the grease attracts rats, and again, you know, we can't even pinpoint who's dumping grease in our sewers. So I have a problem with that as well.
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
To piggyback on Councilman Bazey, the Nagel Construction's been doing this for quite some time. When is that contract up, or is it already up?
I think it's up this fall.
Because I'd like to see that go out the bid, because I think we need to go through all the contracts here pretty soon. We're going to be at our study session. We're going to be doing some cost cutting.
Well, I agree. All our contracts that are currently expired must be put out for bids. Definitely. We have Director McIntyre?
Yeah, I just want to mention, a week ago Friday, I was traveling westbound on Van Born, and ironically, I was actually going to check on, there's a gentleman that has chosen to be homeless. He has some mental health issues. The police and fire know him really well, and several of us check on him periodically to see if he needs anything. I was checking on him because he hangs out behind a particular strip mall off of Van Born. When I was pulling in there to check on him, I saw a company, a grease removal company, with their hose and a drain dumping the contents of their truck into our system. So, you know, we stopped them. Bill Zimmer was contacted, the police came out. We also called Nagel to have them come out to help us try to clean it up. We have issued charges against them. The, I'm not at liberty to say the company's name right now until the court date, which should be in the next two weeks. Five charges against the company, and four against the driver. So I'll be able to tell you the outcome of that court date in the next probably three weeks. I imagine it's not going to be resolved on that first court date, but that did occur, so.
What court will that be in, the Dearborn Heights?
Yep.
Okay.
And that's been one of my beliefs for a long time, is that it's, you know, we put, we created an ordinance to make sure that our businesses are doing what they need to be doing, and we are diligent. In fact, I've got, besides the inspector that we hired for that purpose, I've got an additional ordinance person that's assisting in that process. So we're, on a daily basis, businesses are sending us their cleanouts. In fact, the company that had just been cleaned out was shocked to find out, he said, "I just paid that guy," and to remove it from my business, and he literally was putting it into the sewer system, so, alleged. I have to say alleged. So, but I caught him. I've got film of him doing it, and we're going to prosecute him, so I just wanted to mention that.
That's good news. Good news. Madam Chair. Councilman and Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Madam Chair, I have two questions.
Sure.
First item is Current Claim 6-4, and if there's an update, because this is a grass cutting, again, that is outsourced to Artistic, that is public property owned by the city for the most part, it looks like the lots along the E Course Creek. And normally, DPW would be doing that. I know, we've been discussing this for, I don't know, it seems like at least two months. Started in, actually, in May, we started using, I believe, for those properties, maybe more farther back than that. But is there an update to why we're still using Artistic? I mean, do we not have anyone available from DPW? Is it an overtime thing?
Director McIntyre, you signed this invoice, but it should have been signed by DPW, looking at the different addresses. Is there a reason why you signed it instead of Mr. Director Zimmer?
No. If you look at the follow-up sheets, he actually, I sign, the cover sheet is my signature for the comptroller's purposes, but if you look at the individual invoices, they're signed by Bill Zimmer.
Okay. Because those are two separate departments. How come somebody in DPW didn't sign it?
Well, again, that's the cover sheet to allocate the funds, but the actual individual...
Right. I get, I get that, but maybe Mr. Blackburn or somebody else in his department?
I think that's just something that we can probably switch in the comptroller's office, and she might not have been aware that they, you know, should have, they need to be separate, so.
Now, are you going to continue using Artistic?
Well, for residential, I can speak for the residential cuts that are done by enforcement. He's, he is under contract, and we're going to be going out for bid in the spring for any contractors that might want to bid on that. So the last invoice, the $2,000 invoice, is the one that is residential cuts.
Because I think I saw that his contract expired in 2016. Am I correct?
Well, we talked about this at the last meeting. We did get an extension. I came before your, not, not many of you, because you weren't elected at the time, and asked for a one-year extension.
So that would have been 2017 then, right?
Through 2018, is the way I, yeah.
All right. Yeah, because I know in the past, our DPW guys, there, I understood there was only six guys in the Highway Division, and they were able to cover all these lawn cuttings that we got Artistic doing now. And as of today, we have 11 guys, so if they could handle it with six, I don't understand why we're not using our Highway guys.
That, that would be a question for Mr. Blackburn. If I can say one thing, though, because I'm really concerned about, I know he's the contractor, but he's also a small business owner in our city, and it's his work is why I originally came to you and asked for an extension. I've worked, since I've had this position, I've worked with a lot of different contractors. No one has ever done the kind of, had the kind of service level that Artistic does. And I'm concerned that because his name keeps getting mentioned at these meetings, in fact, one of his invoices, if we remember, got pulled incorrectly, the one that pertained to residential. And you did, Council Chair, you did correct it to make sure that that was paid to him. But he is a small business owner, he has a very good reputation, his kids go to our school systems, you know. I just don't, I don't want it to, we keep saying his name as if that's a bad thing, and he's only under contract. He's not, he's asked to do a job, and he's been performing the job, so.
I understand, but we also have DPW employees that we're paying that are supposed to be doing that, and that kind of bothers me with the budget and how we've got problems with our money right now, that we really should try and save wherever we can.
Respectfully, I just want to make sure it's two separate things here, though. We're not trying to...
Right, ordinance, I understand.
We're not trying to, no, 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 about Artistic particularly. I just don't want anybody to think that his company is doing something incorrectly.
Oh, no. They're not.
No, but hang on a second. At the last meeting, someone made reference to connections that people may have. I, I like using Artistic because of the job that they do. You can check with any resident, in fact, a lot of residents see the work that he does for, for us through ordinance enforcement, and have hired him to do work on their own property. I just don't want his name to be potentially put in the mud. He's a contractor, just like any other contractor. If, if we need to do something internally different, that's, that's one thing, but I don't, I, I'm concerned about the way his name keeps being brought up, his business name.
I understand. And Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, please.
Thank you. I don't think that's what's implied, because you have two bills. One is for the residential, which is 6-5. That is properly, you bid it out, that was your, the, you know, the council approved that, and that person, that business, it's not personal. Does their job they should do for residential. The question I have is because 6-4 is public property, typically performed by DPW, and the taxpayers, we collect taxes for that service, and as Council Chair said, there's more employees now than there was last year, and so that's really why I'm asking the question, because we're the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. I don't, I would never imply anything against the business owner, nor I do, I think the city council is. It's a question of proper, you know, looking over the tax dollars, right?
No, there was a statement at the last meeting that gave the impression, because several people came to me, actually, to my ordinance counter a couple days later, gave the impression, and they heard it very clearly, that there was an underlying comment that was made that would give thought to the fact that maybe I knew Artistic before I hired them, or that there was some connection to me and Artistic, and it might have also included other employees of the city and businesses that we do business with. So I just wanted to be clear. I didn't know them before I started here. They do a great job, and that's why I like to have them, and because they do such a great job for us, so.
Point, no, I didn't. Okay. Councilman Abdallah?
Sorry, Madam Chair. Point of order, do we have an answer from?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Director, I'm sorry, Mr. Blackburn.
For that, just in update. Thank you. I'm sorry. We didn't get an answer.
Thanks. I was looking.
What was the question?
The question is, it looks like you have the guys in Highway that are capable of cutting the lawns. There's more now than there was a few years back, and they covered the whole city with just six guys. Now you have 11. Why do you continue to go to Artistic when we have our own guys that we are collecting money through taxpayers to employ, to do this?
We have in the past, a couple of our past tree contractors, they only work specifically for us, so they were able to handle most of the tree issues, which left the Highway guys more to doing cutting grass. Those contractors are no longer alive. Contractor we use now, he, personal business, he gives the city a discount, so he doesn't, his profit margin for the city, he doesn't do a lot, he does work for the city, but we have transitioned from less of the cutting grass to more of our guys doing the trees because of falling behind, because one thing that really fell us behind on trees was the ash tree borer. That took a lot of years to get rid, there was like over 3,000 trees we had to get cut down, and it took a long time, which put a lot of tree trimming on the back burner to get those ash trees down.
Right.
And we are in need to catch up. It's, it's just an allocation of manpower. We need more on trees now than grass.
But we only have so many vehicles that will cut the trees, right?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
You can only put so many guys on a tree?
But you also have to realize that we also have to sweep the streets, too. Part of the Clean Water Act is we have to sweep the streets, so that takes positions that could cut grass to sweep streets.
Could we possibly hire a temporary person during the summer? It probably would be cheaper than what we're paying.
We have a lot of students that would...
We have a lot of students in our city that we love it.
One thing is you'll run into union rules as far as what a part-timer is allowed to use, and I will tell you, for the last four years, I have been trying to get part-timers in my department, and I have advertised on social media. This year, I got two. Last year, I got zero. And I was advertising at $12 an hour, and nobody. It's not a matter of fact of hiring part-timers, it's the fact that no one's applying.
Well, if you ever want to, you can always, you know, announce it at our meeting. I'd be happy to let you do that.
It has, it has been mentioned, the HR director has on the city's website, because I copy and paste it from the city's website. I post it on my personal social media, on the community page, and no bites.
Madam Chair.
If I may, I've attended, thank you, I've attended a number of collective bargaining negotiation sessions, seen my bills, even though I'm not primarily responsible for that. And as it's been explained to me several times, what we have here, and the reason we have a grievance, is because essentially, the union is being offered, and its workers are being offered overtime. But they'll take overtime if they can do grass cutting, but they won't take the overtime if they can end up doing, or would be required to end up doing, the tree cutting, or the tree trimming. The tree trimming costs the city considerably more than the grass cutting does for an outside contractor to do, and therefore, it, it makes more sense for these individuals, if they're going to be called in for overtime, for, from the city standpoint, to end up being, coming in, doing overtime to trim trees. But they won't come in, and they've refused overtime, and this has been stated to me over and over by...
Now, do you have documentation, though? I understand that that's not correct, what I've been told.
Well, then you haven't been told, frankly.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have the...
I'm questioning it, because I mean, like I said...
I know that Ms. Lazlo and Ms. Sabata Perry have both indicated this, and have, I think you have cards, as a matter of fact, showing refusals for people to come in, and therefore, what ends up happening is they want to end up doing the grass cutting, but they don't want to do the tree trimming, but the tree trimming is what we really need them to do, because that's what really costs us the money, and the grass cutting doesn't cost us nearly as much money, so they refuse the overtime in general, leaving us to still have to cut the grass, and that's, that's what the issue's about, as I understand it.
Sure.
I had one more question, if I may, ma'am.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Oh, Councilman Wenzel?
Isn't there a way to, I mean, they want to come in to cut grass, but they don't want to trim trees? To say, you know, you can't, you can't get any overtime unless you do participate in the overtime tree trimming occasionally, or something like that?
That's what's going on right now, and that's why they are refusing. And Ms. Miyaki is right to a large standpoint, and we can't have, as supervisors down at DPW, we can't have our employees dictate to us what they will and will not do. So as it comes to that, yes, they would, they would stay and cut grass, but they will not stay and trim trees. That is correct. And a lot, a large part of it has to do with them being on the tree truck for eight hours to begin with. A lot of them are tired, but then they want to pick and choose what they work, and we can't have that.
There's a management rights issue, and that's what the crux of matter is between the city and the union.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last question for me is 6-14, the current claim 6-14, with the purchase of a Grand Cherokee SUV. This is for the police department. This one, the use for the vehicle, is that part of the patrols?
No, that's, you have the purchase of the insurance forfeiture asset money for the forfeiture city, so you have to use right by the control.
And it's already been purchased, correct?
Correct.
I also understood from the chief, it can only be used for this type of stuff. This forfeiture money cannot be used for anything else. And he mentioned to me that you guys are purchasing in, I shouldn't say what type of car, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, there's, there's monies that are allocated from forfeiture accounts to purchase things that have to do with...
Forfeiture.
Oh, it's in the... It's usually forfeiture.
Right. It'll be unmarked.
Got it.
That's what the chief explained to me.
Council Chair.
Councilman Musket?
I have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Abdallah was first.
Go ahead.
Okay.
6-26, major streets. I don't have a per se question on this, but did anybody ever go look out at Lewis Manor on Fairwood?
I looked at it. Both, yeah. I looked at it.
What did we, what did you come up with? Anything?
The contractor that's, well, he's been contacted, so he's, he's been with the one team.
So they are going to go out?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just, have they, have they done anything with, with Haas where the, when is that going to get done? Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Abdallah?
First of all, in regards to, piggyback on what Councilman Ray Musket's saying, I did go look at it on Fairwood, and I totally agree with you, Ray, it is, I don't want to say a terrible job, but the end result now, after about a year, it, it looks pretty bad. It's got a crack straight through the center.
Well, if you look at the sides real quick, which then is rather...
Yeah, and then, looking for his address, I happened to see the gentleman out there, and then spoke with him. So I seen what he was referring to, and he is 100% right, that is not acceptable, honestly. But just a little side note in regards to the tree service with Artistic. I did speak with deputy, with Director Zimmer, and he mentioned to me a similar situation, where he's got about 5,000 trees that they got to contend with right now, so that's why they're moving a lot of them, try to do the trees that a lot of residents are complaining about. I had a question, one of the residents had sent an email in regards to a couple different questions, and some of them have already been addressed, but I just wanted to address her concern in regards to Oakland County. Actually, the chief might be a better person to answer that, much better than me, but I spoke with the chief about it, and then maybe you could publicly state what the situation is with that. I'm talking about the country, specifically, the question she had is why are we using Oakland County for this service versus keeping something like this in-house? You've explained it to me, but if you could say it publicly?
Yeah, Oakland County is, that's Clemis. That, that's the, that supervises our CAD. Clemis is really the only game in town for all the CAD in this entire, how many communities do they serve? I mean, it's got to be 80 or 90 communities around us, and they're the only CAD. It's based in Oakland County, and that's why it says Oakland County. I know it says FRMS Department and Fire Hall fee. I think that was kind of confusing. That's Fire Records Management Systems, and so that's what it is. The first, when you look at the bill, the department fee is for the first station and for the general service, and then it says Fire Hall fee. That's for any additional stations you have. We have one outstation, so it says Fire Hall fee just for one, so...
Now, you mentioned chief, obviously, it'd be cost prohibitive for us to do it on our own, obviously.
Yeah, if you were, if you were to try to do this on your own, it's astounding, the price of a, and then you need to have two separate CADs, one for fire and one for police, and it's like a million dollars or somewhere in that neighborhood. It's outrageously expensive.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Yeah. Councilman Bazey is opposed. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. We have Public Service Administrator Zimmer request to advertise for bids to replace two compressors at the Carolyn Kennedy Library.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to concur with Public Service Administrator William Zimmer, his request and authorize the comptroller's office to advertise for bids to replace two compressors on the HVAC unit number two at the Carolyn Kennedy Library as outlined in 7A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Public Service Administrator Zimmer request to advertise for bids to replace one rooftop HVAC unit at the Richard Young Recreation Center.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah?
I move that we concur with William Zimmer, Public Service Administrator, in regards to the Department of Public Works is requesting approval to have the comptroller's office advertise for bids to replace one rooftop HVAC unit at the Richard Young Recreation Center as outlined in Item 7B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I'd like to ask the comptroller, how do you advertise for the bids? Is she here?
She just left.
She just left? Oh.
Okay, well, I guess we, you want to hold it till she comes back?
Well, she, her daughter's getting married, and she had a plane to catch to Atlanta, and so she was trying to be here as long as she could, and so she may have had to leave.
Do we want to pull it to next time, then?
Purchasing...
We'll pull it, then. If you want.
I mean, wouldn't Matthews advertise this for us? When the specs for the jobs is written up, the comptroller's office sticks on Mitten, which, and it goes out to all the contractors that are subscribed to it, and then they subsequently bid on projects.
So that's the only site we go to, is Mitten?
I believe so, yes.
Generally recognized for municipalities governmental.
It's, it's open to, like, all government entities use it, if you're on there, all cities, counties, the state.
Sure. Okay.
Do the contractors pay a fee? I'm sorry.
Um, no, contractors pay a fee to be on there.
Yeah.
But the municipalities get it for free.
There's different categories of Mitten, so if it's going to be, for instance, grass cutting, we go out, we go to Mitten in that category for grass cutting.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Musket?
How old is this unit, and what make is it? Does anybody know that?
How old is, at the Young Center?
Yes.
Um, that is the original unit since it was put in, so I think they started building it in '92, so it opened in '94, so...
You don't know what make, make that unit is there now?
Offhand, I do not know offhand.
It's kind of hard for me to believe that parts aren't available for that. I mean, that's a straight-up unit, and compressors and valves are readily available for all rooftop units. You can swi, you can even switch brands.
But the economizers also shot on it, and they don't make the motors no more to replace it. There's certain parts on there, other than the compressor. There's one compressor burnt out on it. It's a two-compressor system. One compressor's burnt out, so it's not cooling as, as well as it should right now. Plus, there's other issues with the motor for the economizer burnt out, and other things that they don't make anymore because they changed those styles and those motors in the last 24 years. And that is an R-22 unit, and pretty soon, we got to change them all over to R-410 anyways, because they haven't made R-22 now, and the cost to fix that unit is not worth it. It's better just to buy a new unit. Thank you.
Got it. Any further questions or concerns? Any further questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have reports from the mayor, replacement of three members on the Planning Commission.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Can I ask a question more, I guess it's a concern before we take a motion, or may have a motion on the floor? I fully agree with Michigan Municipal League, I think most of us would, that suggests municipalities should refrain from having individuals employed as developers, real estate agents planning on planning commissions, and that's because of the potential of conflict of interest. And that would be anybody that has a real estate builder license as well. So with that, and I, I looked at the ordinance as well that we have, which is section 23-29 as well as section 23-32. So these appointments are by the mayor, but they're subject to the approval by the majority vote of the City Council. So it does require concurrence from council members. It also, under section 32 that I mentioned, requires public hearing if you're going to remove anyone, and it gives a very, you know, various reasons, inefficiency, neglect duty, malfeasance in office, et cetera. So the council may, for the cause, remove a member if selected or selects to. My thing that I have, and my question, my concern is, I've, I know, and there were some emails about this, but former Councilman Tom Berry has his license, he's a Realtor license holder, which is current. So, you know, my recommendation is to avoid any perception of impropriety, and my opinion, it would be best not to concur with that. Again, it's not personal. It is based on what Michigan Municipal League suggests, as well as avoiding any perception of that. And based on the ordinance and the way it's written, again, it requires council concurrence on all of these appointments.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Mayor?
I received a email from Councilman Muscat. I called former Councilman Tom Berry. He indicated to me he does not have a current license. He allowed it to expire. He has no intent of renewing it, and that's what he told me today.
You're correct. He did have his license from 2006 to 2009. It is expired, but he currently does have a real estate appraisal license, which also could be viewed as being.
Council Chair, and that, that's, that's the email I sent you, that he does have an assessor's license. Now, we want to be fair to everyone, and former Councilman Berry is a friend of mine. I mean, but if we're going to be fair and up and, and above board with everything, and that's got to be, that's got to be held too, okay? You've got people that are real estate agents or what, with real estate dealings, if they're going to be removed, then we should have no one that has to deal with any sort of real estate. So I, I mentioned that in my email to you, and then I sent you another email back stating that it was still current, and you never responded back to me. So I, I forwarded to everyone here, so everyone here is aware of it. So we have to be above board all the way across the table. So either we're going to do it or just leave the people that are there, there right now.
Council Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I just want to speak in regards to former Councilman Tom Berry specifically. As far as real estate is concerned, I don't know his license, what dates and what have you, but I tell you, from my business, I've never, ever, ever run across him as far as being a Realtor. So he may have had a license, I don't know if he actually practiced. And I've been doing this since 1989. But in terms of the appraisal part, just knowing the business, and I'm just telling you honestly, and then you're entitled to your opinion, I just don't see how an appraiser part, which deals directly with the bank on how much the value is on a home, and we're not talking about Tom Berry specifically, I'm talking about generically, if somebody looks at a house and says this home's worth 90,000 or 150,000, how would that affect the decision making on a planning commission? I just, honestly, I can't see it.
I, I don't know, but if we're going to be above board and have people with, that are involved in real estate, we should just involve nobody in real estate, no matter what license they hold. If it's anything to do with real estate, you can't be on it, plain and simple. That, that's the draw, the line that should be drawn. And that's being fair to everyone who's already served on that commission or is currently serving on that commission. Not fair to them either. So that's all I'm looking at.
Okay.
You can either amend it or.
Councilman Bazey?
Council Chair. I mean, either we go up for vote or amend it.
You want to amend it at this point in fear?
Well, a motion has been made, so if Councilman Bazey wants to make a motion, again.
Make a motion to amend it.
Okay.
You make a motion, amend, I mean, but how?
Yeah, make a motion first.
We can remove Mr. Berry off of it for now till like, his license expires, then we can go back and revisit.
And approve the other two? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so you're asking to amend it to approve it minus Tom Berry under the replacement on the Planning Commission.
Second the motion.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, second it. Any discussion?
Problem is, is we're still going to remove two people from the Planning Commission and keep one more that's on real estate.
Well, no, we're going, we didn't amend that part, so we're actually removing the three, as stated in here, and only putting two on today, and then in.
Yeah, but there's going to be a, there's, you're still going to have one person left on the Planning Commission that has real estate ties.
No, no, we have, it's removing all three of them and replacing them.
All three of these right here?
And replacing them with three, but now we're only replacing them with two out of three, and in the future, we'll find the third person. If we can, you know, someone that would have no conflict of interest.
So Madam Chair, quick follow-up question. The, the three that you have on here that you're replacing, they're the only three that are currently on the, the board, correct? That are real estate individuals or ties or?
My understanding.
Okay, so those three would be removed and?
And then we're putting on two out of three, and then we'll come up with the third one real soon, I guess. The mayor will think of that.
I think, I think former Councilman Tom Berry would have been a good addition, but I understand you have a perfect right to not accept. I don't think there's conflict with, with Tom, but we'll find a third person.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I just want to say something here that's in this letter, and this is on behalf of our, my fellow Realtors, that the mayor did stress that these members that have been on there have only acted in the best interest of the city, and they are in good standing. So I, you know, I want to thank them for their time. I tell you, as a Realtor, I know how much time it takes to run a business like a Realtor, and then for them to come in and volunteer and do all this, I want to thank them for their time, and I, I do know that they're all reputable people.
Yes.
I don't want anything to imply like they did something wrong.
Good point.
Good point. Good point. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell us what, how you go about picking these people? Is it someone that you feel just out of your heart that they're going to be good for the Planning Commission, or do you do some research on them, or?
Yeah.
Good citizens or?
Yeah, basically, we look at the particular individual philosophically, there's an agreement. A lot of these people have been in business or in business and have a good understanding of economic development, and that's one of the things I looked at very strongly. And, and I certainly, as you and I have talked about, on some changes, and I've tried to incorporate some of those things in here. So if you have someone that you think would be an excellent person, because I try to get a geographical balance, please give me the name.
Thank you.
I think we've already addressed it, that we've removed Mr. Berry.
We voted on, we voted on his motion now.
Yes. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from city officials. District Court Administrator Atkins, purchase and payment of two cash registers.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve Michelle Atkins Court Administrator's request and purchase and approve payment for the two cash registers for the 20th District Court. The cost is not to exceed 19,000, which is 900, $9,500 each. The funds were approved in the 2018-19 budget and can be taken from the capital outlay account 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella.
I just want to say to my colleagues, I did speak with Judge David Turfey in regards to this, and he did say that we are in dire need of this in courses, and he totally agreed with Michelle, so just wanted to state that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Any, Councilman Wensel?
$9,000 for a cash register? I mean, obviously, it's more than a cash register, right? Is it a, is, yeah, can you talk?
It integrates with every payment that is integrated to our case management system.
Can you come up to the mic?
Yes, please. And state your name.
Hi, Michelle Atkins from the court, court administrator. No, our cash registers are integrated with our case management system. So if you are coming in to make any payment, it goes directly to your case, so we can keep track of it. It's a, it's an automated computer system.
On the sale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fancy computer.
It's a fancy computer, yes, but they're old, they're, you know, as with every computer, it needs to be updated, and if our computer system goes down, we cannot receive the payments, and therefore.
Is it an actual cash register too?
Yeah, I mean, well, we have the drawers, yeah, the cash drawers, yeah, they'll pop open.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have District Court Administrator Atkins, accept quote and authorize repair and payment of security x-ray scanner.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move to approve the request to accept the quote to authorize repair and approve payment for the repair needed on the court's security x-ray scanner as outlined in 9B, and not to exceed 9,420 dollars.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have Fire Chief Brogan, lease new vehicle from Enterprise Fleet I guess, since nobody said anything, I've got a question on this.
Council Chair.
Council, from Brogan.
I want to make a motion first.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that council give permission to enter into a Enterprise Fleet Management Agreement to acquire one new vehicle as budgeted in a 2018-19 budget. The annual cost per year will be 5,940 dollars and 96 cents to come out of capital outlay. It's going to be replacing a very old Ford Ranger as outlined in 9C.
Second by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. So I guess my question on this is, I was looking at the numbers, and the retail price on this vehicle is 22,994. According to our lease, at the end of our lease, we will be paying a final price of How come we're just not purchasing it? It's costing us almost 7,000 more than if we just bought it outright or paid for it in payments.
You might not be able to answer that, but we, a couple of years ago, Enterprise offered us in which the vehicles, and we're using more and more of their services, so they're doing the fleet management of those particular things. There are optimal points to disposing of vehicles, also all the maintenance and everything is all being handled with Enterprise. So in essence, we're optimizing, and we were able to show, in fact, we were talking about them earlier, but Tom Berry was the one who made the suggestion, and when I met with the Enterprise people, there's been, we've saved thousands of dollars. I can tell you that when, when I just purchased a Escape earlier in the summer, and when I see 22,994, I'm going to tell you that even with my Ford retiree discount, I couldn't get that for 22,940.
That's what I said, why don't we just buy it?
But you do not want to buy these vehicles. What we were have, what our policy was, we bought them and ran them till they dropped. And what the Enterprise system does is they may very well, at a particular point in its life, take the vehicle back because Ford sometimes offers, and, and they're constantly looking at maximizing the vehicle's worth, and because our vehicles generally don't get torn up, and so we got a decent vehicle we trade in. So they manage all that like they do for all their rental cars and for a lot of major corporations in which, so it's really a package, and they tell us when these optimal points. But they've shown us that we were spending so much money on maintenance, on gas for vehicles that were just not mileage. We were running, at one time, I think like 20 former police car, Crown Vics, that were just killing us on fuel and maintenance. So they came in, and that's what the program is and why we utilize.
Okay, yeah, because I just saw $500 a month lease, and I thought, I don't pay anywhere near that for mine.
Right.
You know, and my, my car came out to about that price too.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
I mean, this is to, you know, I had the same questions as the council chair here, and I figured it out too. And I spoke with a salesperson from Ford Motor Company, and he mentioned, similar with this says here, that for about $24,000, you could purchase one brand new. I'm just wondering if maybe it's not a good idea to revisit, you know, the fleet management situation, because, you know, purchasing it for 22 or 24,000, depends what it is, and keeping it past the five years, actually, you know, some people may want to purchase or lease a car, and after three, four years, they want to give it back. But in our case, if we use that car for 10 years, and we've already paid for it with similar money what we would have paid with the leases, I think it's something to revisit, maybe not on this exact one I'm saying, I'm talking about in general, to possibly reconsider that.
But they're paying for all the maintenance also.
Yeah.
The maintenance is included with that monthly fee.
But you can buy the maintenance. I'm just wondering if we should do a study session to revisit that.
It's not that much for the maintenance agreement, because I found it in here somewhere.
$62 right here.
$62 a month for 100,000 miles. 62.77, so that doesn't make a lot.
And it would be covered on the warranty either way.
To 36.
If you're purchasing, what is it, three years? Four years? Whatever? You got 336. Yeah, it'll be covered, and then after that, yeah, we're taking a risk, but for the same money we would be paying in a lease, we've already purchased it, and we own it. We have no more payments. I, I really think we should consider either a study session or something, just to revisit that.
What I would recommend, because you can have the guy come back in, and all of us can question him, we do have a history now in the ordinance with those vehicles, and I think they're working out very well, but.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that I was shocked that I didn't get recovered, when we had the flood, I asked my ordinance folks to help DPW that day to drive around and see if people were needing assistance in their houses and that. And one of our drivers ended up going into a deeper puddle than he expected, and it created some damage on the front of one of the cars. I called Phillips Ford, they said bring it right over. We've already contacted the management, you know, it's going to be covered, so they took care of it.
But it would be covered if we purchased it also. I mean, I see your point, but it would be covered.
Insurance would cover it, because I've had a friend that happened to their car, they got flooded.
No, that's an accident, but I'm talking about just, that's a damage accident. That won't be covered, it can't be covered by fleet, by damage accident.
Yeah, they do.
An accident, accident? Because in this case.
It wasn't, he didn't have a collision with another vehicle, it was kind of a collision with water, and so they, they went ahead and took care of it.
I'm surprised that they would, but, okay. I think it's something that we should revisit.
I, I think with all contracts, it's important to periodically, so I'm not opposed to it. We can have them come back, but-
Chief, is there vehicles that'll come in marked with the fire department logo on it?
We can get it marked. We can get it marked, it won't come marked, that's something we have to add to it.
With our fleet enterprise, they said they would mark them.
Oh, well, we can look into that.
Agreement, I specifically remember, they were supposed to come marked.
Like with ours, they marked them after the-
Yeah, I don't think they know how.
There's no problem. I'm pretty sure when we discussed that, they were supposed to come marked.
I know one of the things that we had asked was if we can take, like, we have our pickup trucks, our utility pickup trucks, and so we added lights, you'd have to drill holes and everything else, we wanted to make sure we could do that, and we could, we could do all that stuff with the trucks.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
Is there a reason why we go through Enterprise and not a major dealer, through Ford Motor Company?
Well, we did a lot of research on this, like we had mentioned, and they, they came up with a, with a great price and a great deal. We were all very happy with, with what Enterprise came up with.
It was cheaper?
Way cheaper, yeah.
Because they're buying, they may be buying a million vehicles all around the country, because every Enterprise, and, and for a lot of customers like we are, they're buying the vehicles. So, I mean, you're, you're talking about a huge distribution, although I think, I'm sure it hasn't changed, in certain states, there's franchise agreements, so you can't buy the stuff directly through Ford Motor Company, you have to buy them through a local dealer.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase BRICS alerting and AFG grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Fire Chief David Bro, David Brogan, requesting to enroll with B-R-Y-X station alerting for the north and south end fire stations. This is part of the AFG grant, and the price is $41,752. The federal grant will cover $37,577, leaving the city's share at $4,175 to be paid from capital outlay payable upon receipt as outlined in item 9D.
Second. Supported by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Chief, was there an RFP sent? I know there's one company that you have on here, was there, was there RFP sent, or is this only-
You know, we already have an existing relationship with BRICS, they're already integrated into our CAD system, and I know that, I did call a couple other companies, and just to, Purvis is one of the biggest ones, they charged $150,000 just to do the CAD integration piece. So we, we could get more RFPs, but it's going to come back incredibly high, just because we already have the BRICS already integrated into our system.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next is also Fire Chief Brogan, permission to enter agreement with Guardian Alarm AFG grant.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to concur with Fire Chief David Brogan, and grant permission to enter the security agreement for doors, locks, and key cards, along with the station monitoring from Guardian Alarm. The total cost is $28,345. The federal AFG grant will cover $19,158, leaving the city's share at $9,187 to come out of capital outlay payable upon receipt as outlined in 9E.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Muscat, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Public Service Administrator Zimmer, one single axle dump truck equipment purchase.
Council Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with DPW Director William Zimmer, requesting approval to purchase one single axle dump truck from Wolverine Frightliner Eastside, Inc., per our specifications, and attached quote for a cost of $156,235. This pricing is from the Rochester Hills Co-op Award Agreement for the chassis and equipment pricing per Michigan Deal Contract, and the funds for this purchase have been allocated in approved 2018 and 19 budget under capital outlay for the Highway Department as outlined in item 9F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Conston, Councilman Bazey?
I don't see an RFP with this, I mean, we, was there an RFP sent for this vehicle?
We're using the Rochester Hills bid award.
What's the Rochester Hills bid award?
Yeah. If a, if a community or the state bid out, then you, as a community, we can use those bid processes to make purchases, so it saves the cost of going through a bidding process.
So it's like a group discount, because everybody's going through them, is that what you're saying?
Pretty negotiated, probably.
Sometimes that's where we buy a car, comes from Lansing or-
Yeah, but we think we should.
In line, if we still trying other avenues, just to make sure that we're still on the same page with that, you know, that the-
I have a question.
Because we get too comfortable, sometimes pricing changes and nobody notices. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
Is this a replacement for a vehicle?
Yes, this is going to be a replacement for one of our dump trucks that have gone down.
So what is the other vehicle worth, and what, when are we going to get rid of it? We should be seeing that coming before us then, correct? To dispose of and trade, how come we didn't get a trade in on it?
It's one of those rusted out.
Still, steel is worth something.
I agree, I agree, but-
Yeah, they, we, they might be using it for parts, because a lot of the trucks, we've had the beds replaced on them, the frame and the chassis, and a lot of that stuff is rotted out, but a lot of the other stuff on it is still good where we can use it as a parts vehicle also.
So then we should see something coming to us to remove that vehicle from the inventory so we can part it out, correct?
You should be seeing something.
Is it still drivable?
Well, I understand, and once we get delivery, we can't, we're not going to do anything until we get delivery, I understand that. Okay, just, just for my little mental note here.
And we got time, it takes nine, nine months for a truck to get built, so there's a lot of time left.
Right. So we've been without a truck for nine months?
No, no.
No, the truck has broken down within this past year. It takes nine months to build a truck, and we have to, we have to wait until the council approves a budget in order to go out for bids, because if you throw the dump truck out after we ordered it, it can't be done.
Okay. I have a question too, this-
It doesn't take nine months to build a truck, I guarantee it not.
This has a differential lock on it, and-
You've never worked in an automobile factory.
Okay, this has a differential lock on it, and this says it's a single axle. Usually differential locks are on double axles. Is this a different kind or something because of this truck? Because they're charging us $530 on that.
The differential lock is kind of like your car, only one, one tire spins, you hit the different, differential lock both sides spin.
I have a car with two-wheel drive and it has differential lock.
Got it, just want to make sure.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
Couple questions, is this new truck the same make and model as the one that's being replaced? So you could use parts off it, or are the parts you're referring to, the additional parts, like the bucket and, or the bed or something like that?
We can use additional parts like the bed, sometimes we can use the tailgate, but that can also be used for other vehicles that we had, that we have in the fleet. There's other, there's other trucks in our fleet now that are the same style as the one that is, that is currently out of service.
Is this the big giant dump truck, the one with the snowplows on it?
Yes, yes, and it comes outfitted with an underbody and a bracket for front end plow too.
I, I did speak with Director Bill Zimmer, by the way, and he did mention, he said, almost a high percentage of them need to be replaced because they're badly rusted. They're all from the, I wrote it here, 1990s is when all these were bought.
We had a previous administration, our vehicles were in bad shape, they replaced the entire fleet within two years, they had replaced the entire fleet two or three years. And when you do that, the whole entire fleet goes in the dump in about the same amount of time. So buying a truck, buying one or two trucks every year keeps them rotating rather than replacing a whole fleet at once.
Right. We did talk about this during the budget time, though, I remember.
Yeah. Councilman Bazey?
Are you anticipating on purchasing another one of those, or is that just so-
What other vehicles are we going to be-
Um, right now, it's just one, it's going to be up to Director Zimmer and the mayor, whether anything gets put in the next budget, that's not my call.
Yeah, there's, there was only one put in this budget.
How many do we have?
12?
12.
I think in the future, for any vehicles, I mean, with that high, it's a high price, we need an RFP, it doesn't matter if it's through whatever the state negotiated, I think it has to go out for bid, then we can-
Sometimes, sometimes piggybacking off another city's bid, especially Rochester, if they went out for two or three dump trucks, they may have gotten a better price than us just going out for one. So piggybacking off another city's bids sometimes is beneficial to us because we are a smaller community and we don't buy as much as one time. Buying ones will cost us a lot more, going, spending the time going out for bids to buy one is going to cost us more than piggybacking off another county or city and getting them at a better rate.
I agree, but we still need another quote, you know, in the future.
It doesn't say we can't use them, but let's go out for other quotes, just reassure ourselves that there's still the sheet as well.
The research that was done, that was the best one. They do have two other quotes too, for the same truck.
Okay.
Where are they at?
Next time, can they include them in this so we can see and compare them?
Yep.
That'd be great, thanks. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have new business, we have the business license renewal for X-Drive Auto Sales located at 6528 North Telegraph.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that we renew the business license for X-Drive Auto Sales at 6528 North Telegraph in Dearborn Heights, as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah, is there any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, we have comments from council members. I'd like to start out by asking, Mr. Mayor, I understand that we have completed the lease agreement for Canfield Arena, is that correct? About a week ago, two weeks ago, that we, council approved, is that correct?
Yeah, it's been submitted to the clerk's office.
Okay, it's-
Why hasn't it been signed?
Is it signed?
He brought it to your office yesterday.
Right, right, has it, is it currently, did you sign it?
No.
Is there a reason why you didn't? Okay.
No, I have, I have my, one secretary that was on maternity leave-
Right.
Has come back.
Okay.
And, but there's an area in my office that everything needs to be signed, is signed.
Okay.
Now, I will tell you that I intend to sign it. I was very disappointed in how the process went at the last meeting, but I've agreed not to veto it, and I will sign the agreement.
Okay.
So if we can find where the agreement is, I will sign it.
Well, I, I did request a copy of it, and I do have a copy of the agreement, if you want it now, if you want to sign it now.
It should be signed through the clerk's office, that was the-
Well, I think protocol, from what I understand, is the mayor signs it first, then the clerk, and then Mr. Mackey? That's what I was told protocol was.
Sorry, so I would want to sign the same copy you signed.
It should be, it should be, there were two copies that were submitted-
Well, might as well do it, so there's no loss, and then we got Mr. Clerk, we've got two-
There were two copies that were submitted to the clerk's office, those were the ones that I have reviewed and that I confirmed are appropriate, those are the ones that should be signed, one kept by the clerk's office with copies made, and then one for Mr. Mackey's company.
Okay, they're in the mayor's office, we just confirmed it.
I don't know where it is. Okay, well, then, you know.
You know, Council Chair, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, two weeks, it's a signature, takes you 10 seconds to put your name on a dotted line. We approved it seven to nothing. The council, Corporation Council approved it. We, we've had this discussion, I remember years ago about, well, I'm not going to go chase somebody to assign a contract. A contract was issued, and it was approved seven to nothing, that should have been signed the next day, not, like little kids in, in, in grade school, well, I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to go over there and get it, and I'm not going to have him bring it over here. It's in your office, you need to go down there and look for it and sign it. That'd be simple.
No.
What do you mean no?
Because you're, you're making an allegation which is not appropriate, and the fact is, there's a good working relationship between the clerk's office and my office.
I'm not making any allegations.
So let's find where the agreement is, and then I'll sign it.
How, how can you lose an agreement? It's either in your office or his office, go, open the door, get the agreement, and sign it. Now, how long does that take to do? I mean, how long does it actually take to go down the hall right now, open the door, find a contract, bring it here and sign it? Honestly, five minutes maybe? And I just, I just don't understand how petty this becomes.
Councilman, please. Christie, do you know where it's located right now?
She's not working in the office.
Okay, then, Mr. Ann Craft, do you know where it's located?
Sorry, I have not seen it.
Okay.
I think it was done, that was handled by the other secretary. Sorry, I have no idea.
Can we go look for it? I mean, if it's supposed to be on that table, it should be on that table. How long does it take to do this?
It was not on-
We got a dollar waiting on a dime here, okay? And we're throwing money, legal money here, back, back and forth, and all we need is two signatures. And it's just ridiculous that we got a signature and wait for two signatures.
We're losing money on this, every day we wait.
I mean, you knew that you were supposed to sign that two weeks ago. You knew it.
No, I did not.
What do you mean you didn't know? We voted seven to nothing.
Wait a minute, the agreement had to be prepared, and it was reviewed, I think, by both attorneys. I don't know, when, when was it delivered to the clerk's office?
I don't know, was it delivered, I, I'm not sure, Monday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
It was delivered Wednesday.
So it was Wednesday? So what happened with, with all day Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, and part of today? Seven, eight days for all the days to take a signature?
My recollection, if I may.
Well, you know what, Mr. Mayor, I think you're derelict in your duty on this. I truly believe you are. It takes a signature, and the Corporation Council already approved it, so there's no legal matters about it.
Can we send somebody down to see if they can find it anywhere?
And even if you vetoed it, we have the right to override your veto anyway.
And I did not veto it.
I understand, so why can't we get it signed?
When we find it, we'll sign it.
Well, let's, you've got the copy right there.
My dog ate my homework.
I, I got a copy, it's right there, that is the actual copy, and-
I will sign the copy, Mr. Mackey signed and you reviewed. I'm not just signing a blind copy, and I review everything I sign.
Absolutely, you should.
That's right. So just to show something to me, I'm not going to sign it.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes, I have one more comment about something.
And then Muscat?
There was a gentleman who complained about a tree that was in bad shape, a city tree, near Parkland Park, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, but the branch finally fell off and destroyed his privacy fence. That was almost a month ago. Why does it take this long to get this guy's fence fixed? I mean, why does he have to come in and file paperwork and all this when the city was out there clearing the debris and know the fence is broken? I, I mean, I'll get the address and send it off to DPW tomorrow, but I don't think that this guy should have to wait a week to get it, or a month, to get his fence fixed. It's a nice privacy fence, and he's been complaining about that tree over and over again, and he's an elderly gentleman, and is there anything we can do to help him out?
Mr. Blackburn?
I am going to assume that the gentleman went through the controller's office and the insurance company is handling it, and you know insurance companies, they don't get stuff done in a week.
That I understand, but does he have to come in and file the paperwork?
Paperwork has to be filled out to be submitted to the insurance company so that they can approve or deny the claim.
I, I do know he has not come in, so I, I will give you that much, but I just don't understand why he has to come out and do it when it was clearly a city tree that, and you guys cleaned it up, I mean, I don't know how that, so you're saying he has to come in and file off paperwork?
He has to come into the controller's office to file paperwork for the insurance company, yes.
Councilman Bazey?
I don't know, is, is there anybody here from the building department?
Who's representing the building department tonight?
Okay.
MacIntyre?
It was brought to my attention a few days ago, I actually met with some, a few residents, a few real estate agents, and a few builders, and it was brought to my attention, there's something that doesn't make sense to me, and it doesn't make sense to the people I met with, and we brought that up before. There is a new homes built, we won't say what the address is, however, okay, say, for example, there's this house 2,800 square feet, oh, it was appraised at $120,000, they paid $4,000 in, in permit fees. Then you have another house, 2,900 square feet, and this particular person paid $8,000 for a fee to build that home, so it's like double the fee to build the same house, which is like 100 square feet more than the other one. And this particular person is paying $8,000, 8,100 versus 4,000. And one house was valued at $120,000, the other house was valued at $235,000. I mean, there's a huge disconnect, there's a bunch of them in here, but I'm just highlighting I mean, there's a huge disconnect, there's a bunch of them in here, but I'm just highlighting just at least two of them here. So, I don't understand why there's a problem. I've talked to, I've called a dozen different municipalities in the area, I even called much smaller cities than ours, they use a process. There's a form, it's called the Marshall-Swift Cost Evaluation Calculations, and this form actually keeps people, I guess, transparent and honest, so, at least that's some of the people bringing this to my attention, that they don't think that we're honest to them when we charge them double the fees, and if you go to this form, the Marshall-Swift Cost Evaluation calculation form, it basically just calculates how much is the value of the house. It doesn't matter which, which area, and it values a house at a certain price and you pay a certain fee. So, Person A doesn't pay double the price as Person B. It's actually, it's not fair, and these guys, like I said, they're very concerned, and they want to pursue this further unless we actually come up with a corrective action plan. That's one.
We need the addresses so we can look at it.
Well, I think, Mayor, you can go back to your building department, and you can audit your own records. I mean, this, this came from your department, from your building department, so I think if you go do an audit the last two months, you'll find these homes.
Twenty...
I, I don't know how many new houses we have built in this city, so I'm sure if you go look at them, there's inconsistencies. I, I have 30 homes right now that actually, they're very inconsistent, and they're like doubled amounts.
Can you, would you be able to provide me with those lists, and then I'll, I can get an answer for it?
If you go to the building department, you can build, two months, just look two months of homes that has been built or even renovated, and you, you can see the same thing that I'm seeing here.
Okay.
So, again, we need to be transparent, and there has to be a process in place. Every municipality in the area has this process, except us in Dearborn Heights. I don't know why that is. That's one, one issue that these guys have, the biggest issue that they have, that some, some residents, they want to sell their homes, they want to leave, and yet we're holding them because of a, a water reading. Every city in the area has two to three days, Melvin there has two to three days that they get a final water reading. We have two to three weeks, and we only, according to the, the people that I talked to, they have to wait two to three weeks to get a water, final water reading, because they were told that they only read on Thursday. I think that's unacceptable, because usually, I'm sure, most people know you have like about three days or so to close, once you get okay to close, now you have to wait for a final water reading. I mean, that's, that's unacceptable. That's all I got.
Any further comments from the council table?
Then, Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
Um, I just want to remind everyone that the District 7 Dad's Club is holding their registration at the Richard A. Young Center the weekend of the 6th and 7th, and the following weekend for times. You can call the Richard A. Young Center and they'll provide you with that information. Also, I was wondering if the mayor could give us an update on the Van Born Corridor project?
Uh, the committee has met, there is a date, Bob, do you remember the date for the public hearing and where it's going to be?
It's September 19th. We're meeting on that tomorrow to finalize all the information, but I believe it was the 19th.
So, Bob and, and Mr. Sadiqian are working to put out press releases to invite the public for the public hearing, and the committee has met with the Taylor Group, and I got feedback from three or four of our members that they were really excited about what they saw.
Where's the plan on having this meeting?
Mr. Brooks was just saying 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock at the Richard Young Center.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the council table?
Madam Chair?
Mayor?
I'd like to have, I received a call from our fire chief, I'm very proud to announce that we have a rather significant safer grant that we were awarded, and I'll let the chief give the details.
We just got the call last week that we got a safer grant for three new positions for a total of $340,000 over three years. So, it's pretty big news, we're very happy, and, $340,000.
Good job, Chief.
That was, and again, that's, we, we had some grants go through again today, you saw some of the purchases, and that's Lieutenant Lisa Martin, our EMS coordinator and grant writer, she's done an outstanding job for us getting these grants, so, very good.
Is there any particular position these are allocated for?
Well, this is going to allow us to, to go forward with that battalion chief concept, and, and it's going to be, we'll be able to do it now at, at no risk, and try it for three years and see how it's going to work out, and then, and then be able to make a decision on how, how we're going to move forward after three years.
So, that will pay their salary, is that what the grant is for?
It's, it's going to pay for, for three new hires, and, and then we won't need to, to put that deputy chief in place that we had talked about before, and so, so it'll be a, we still have some, some figuring to do, staying down with the union, and we're trying to come up with the best way to, to go about this, and we'll have to talk with, with the mayor and do some negotiating before we move forward with it, but, but yeah, it's, it's very exciting.
Okay, thank you.
Can you use that money also to pay, pay their benefits?
Yes, yep. It's, it is a little different this year as far as it, it does a percentage of it every year, and it kind of gets us, gets a little bit less each year. It used to be 100%, and now it's, now it's a percentage of their, of their salary and their benefits, so.
Thanks.
Any other...
One quick before you, regarding the, the, the Van Born Corridor meeting, that is indeed on September 19th, it's going to be from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Richard Young Center.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to open up to announcements for the city events.
No library?
No library today? This is odd. He's always here.
Doing radio now.
I guess.
This Saturday, at Tyrone Wheatley Park on Beach Daly near Penn, RHS, which encompasses Roosevelt for the older students, and Robishaw for the new ones, are having a great picnic starting at 9 o'clock in the morning until it gets dark or they decide to close it up. And so, the students in particular, and maybe their friends would be invited and like to come. And then the other announcement is, the next meeting for the Southwest Dearborn Heights Neighborhood Association is also September 19th from 7 to 9. We will have a lovely lady named Tracy from the New Boston facility, and we will discuss recycling, the proper way to do, and she will have a demonstration and a video, I believe, to show us. So, that will be a good thing to have. And I just want to let everybody know, we have a gentleman working for us for just gas money for the neighborhood association, who does accommodate and help the police by doing the entire neighborhood once a day, and, and he even goes east of Telegraph a little bit, but you're talking Michigan Avenue to Van Born, Telegraph to Inkster Road at the Annapolis Cutaway.
Is that right?
So, Frank Zack is...
Yes, yes, he's a good guy. I'm at him.
...for the work he does. And if you see him in a white car with a thing on the side, say hello. He deserves our appreciation. He's doing it for his, his own benefit and ours, okay?
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comments.
Mr. Blackwell?
Oh, Mr. Blackwell, go ahead, please, if you've got a community announcement?
Yes, I just wanted to say, there's a potential for storms tonight. I know people won't see this for tonight, but for future, if you, if we have a storm and branches from city trees do fall, if the branch is not in a, if it's not a danger to citizens, please wait till the morning to call, to call the non, if it's a danger, call the police non-emergency number, because to go out for a four-foot twig that's only a half-inch diameter waking somebody up in the middle of the night is counterproductive. So, if the branch is not a danger, please wait until 8:00 a.m. when city business opens, then call down at the DPW, and then we can take care of it. If, if it is a danger, call the police non-emergency number after hours, and then they'll call the supervisor on duty.
Thank you.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Piggybacking on what Mr. Blackburn just said, and I know you guys can't do none of this, but we have a lot of trees in the city that wires are going through them. When is Edison going to come and clear them out? I mean, they're, that's starting to pose a danger.
Good luck there.
No, I called one in just recently, and they haven't showed up. It's pulling the wire, and, do we have any idea on how that we get that done, or, does anybody know how that gets done?
Call Edison and go on.
Yeah, we, we have a contact at DTE that Bill Zimmer works with, there, there were three separate crews with three separate schedules this past spring and summer. I know one was in the west side of Telegraph, south of Joy, there was a crew in there. Part, it's interesting you brought this up, because just today, I was talking to someone at my counter who said, "The city won't come out, and DT won't come out to take care of a tree that is in the wires." And I said, "Who planted the tree? I'm just curious." And she said, "Well, I did." I said, "Well, why did you plant a tree underneath wires that you knew was going to grow into the wires?" So, it's going to take a team effort on this one, we're going to have to work together to get this resolved, but ironically, if you talk to DTE, they're frustrated that people keep planting trees and mulberry bushes that become 30 feet tall in those areas. So, we try to do a lot of proactive education with folks and tell, encourage them, "Please do not," it's an easement, it's a utility easement, but they certainly didn't plant the trees, DTE, they end up having to be, you know, more reactive. But I know last, this past year, there was three separate teams, three separate schedules where they're proactively out in particular areas clearing it out, so...
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Okay, any other public, okay, at this time, I'm going to open it up to public comment. We ask you state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Council Chair, Mr. Mayor, City Council. At 7:45 a.m. today, my attorney, Robert Akkuri, sent the city attorney, Mr. Miyaki, an email asking him where the signed lease was. I signed the lease on Wednesday. I called the clerk's office twice that day, once on Thursday, twice today, and once yesterday. The clerk has told me that the lease is in the mayor's office, his secretary knows it's there, and he hasn't decided to sign it yet. Mr. Mayor, on February 27, 2018, during the city council meeting here, if you watch the tape at 13 minutes and 55 seconds, you said, Mr. Mayor, you would put restrictions on us if we awarded the lease of the Canfield Ice Arena. While you were true to your word, the restrictions haven't stopped and will continue till today. A very interesting statement you said, Mr. Mayor, how the city services its residents. If you look at that tape at 13 minutes and 33 seconds, you said how the city services its residents and how it's open to everybody. Mr. Mayor, as you know, I'm a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights. I have called you in the past many times, sent emails, had people call you, and no response. That's not the service I am looking for from my mayor. You can't find the paperwork, I understand. Mr. Mayor, you watched the Canfield Ice Arena be condemned. The rent was never paid, and this went on for months and possibly longer. I'm sure you couldn't find the rent then either.
Mr. Mackey, can I respond?
I'm not done, Mr. Mayor, I got three minutes, if you don't mind. Thank you very much, sir. Now, the city is stuck with a condemned building that's receiving no money and utilities that are owned by the past tenant. Furthermore, I received an email from the Parks and Director back when I was trying to acquire this arena, that the administration was very happy with the current tenant and was going to renew his lease, a tenant that never paid the rent, of course, a tenant that never made improvements to the Canfield Ice Arena, a tenant that let the arena get condemned. On February 27th, of 42 minutes and 37 seconds of the city council meeting, the city council authorized the city clerk and the mayor to sign the agreement, and it's still not signed. Mr. Mayor, I'm patiently awaiting your signature. One more thing I want to bring to the point. Over four months ago, I sent the city a FOIA for the Canfield Ice Arena. I'm just wondering if that was lost also, I'm still waiting. I sent one on my house, I got it back within 10 days, but a FOIA request on the Canfield Ice Arena is nowhere to be found. Thank you.
If, if I might, I've spent considerable amount of time, both today and yesterday, because there is a problem with DTE and the site. I think you are aware of it. I had a long discussion with Mr. Miyaki, I had a long discussion with Mr. Greibel in regards to how to get this problem resolved, and Mr. Miyaki's here to, to indicate. He, I authorized him to actually go and to take action if necessary against DTE, because they simply are refusing to shut off the electricity and are insisting that the city provide a deed on the particular property, which we do not have. Despite what you think, I have worked very hard to move this, because this is an insurmountable problem in regards to taking down the site and construction, and we need it resolved. So, if I was blocking you, why would I have spent all this time trying to get DT, and Mr. Miyaki is my witness as, on that, so...
Thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Mayor. How much is the bill for DT? Do you mind if someone tells me?
That's, the bill is not the issue at this point. The bill was an issue, but what ended up happening is, I think they realized that the city's name and authorization was not on the bill, and they don't really have a basis for any sort of a claim against us. The issue now is that they won't give a clearance for you to do the demo, for anyone to do the demo, because they're saying there is no deed for 2,100 Kinlock, because the deed that the city has is from 1964 from Ms. Honigman, who ended up giving the whole area, the arena, the, the community center, the fire headquarters, all those buildings were, all those areas were given to us long ago. I think that's going to end up getting resolved, because I spoke to the supervisor for the person who was the problem, and I think he had a misunderstanding. He seemed to think that when we got the property, it was called 2,100 Kinlock, when it was probably just a field or woods, but that had ended up being, being an issue.
Mr. Miyaki, I mean, I understand commercial real estate very well, it's something I do, I acquire properties, this is not something that just happens. This is very normal with DT. So, I can resolve DT issue for you tomorrow if you'd like.
Well, I actually...
I'm even willing, if you can't find the deed for a property the city owns, I'm even willing to go pay the bill to clear it, because that's all they care about.
I don't think the bill is the issue.
And if you'd sign a lease agreement, I can go down to DT and get the utilities cut off and then put back in my name. I think Councilman Abdullah has a lot of experience in this.
That's correct, that's correct.
This is not very hard to do, it's very simple. So, I, I have spent almost every Tuesday evening here, okay? I love you guys, but I don't want to be here every Tuesday. I got a family, I got four kids, I got things to do, I coach, I left coaching and come here. Communication, Mr. Miyaki, is very open, it's very easy. You can communicate these with my attorney if you don't want to talk to me. You can communicate it with other people that could address it to me. So, the door...
I'm not sure what your reference is.
I mean, if you're saying that the mayor hasn't...
I've spoken to...
So, if you're saying the mayor hasn't signed the lease because of DT?
No.
Okay, so, 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 Mayor, you're saying that the lease is not found, you don't know where the lease is.
The mayor's reasons for not signing the lease, you have to address to him. Items were...
But what does DT have to do with this? Because I can, I can solve DT's issue in one minute, so can you?
There had been this problem, and the mayor had a concern about it, we spoke at length about it today, he had followed up already, and...
I'm going to ask, Mr. Mayor, are you going to sign the lease tomorrow?
Yes.
What time should I come to your office and pick it up?
Uh, can I have it for you at 9 o'clock?
I'll be here. I'll ask that Ms. Council Chair be here too, so I can make sure I get it.
No, I don't, it'll be ready for you, you come and it'll be there.
I asked Council...
I can come, I'll come.
Fully execute it, is the clerk here?
No.
Can someone sign on behalf of the clerk? Because the clerk's been wanting to sign this lease for two days.
Has the clerk signed it yet or not?
Oh, the clerk's protocol, as I've been informed by the clerk, I have voice messages. Listen, I do my homework, I'm not going to let you put egg on my face. Okay, I called the clerk four times, I got voice messages from him, okay? I can play them right here if you want. It's protocol that the mayor signs the lease first, and then he signs it. The clerk has gone to the mayor's office numerous times to ask where the lease is and why it's not signed.
Then when the clerk...
I'll be here at 9 a.m. in the morning, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
When is the clerk supposed to be in?
He'll be in on Monday. He'll be in on Monday. Madam Chair.
Robert Akkuri, Corporate Counsel for ALLETE, which is a corporate resident, furthering this issue. My frustration is, Mr. Mayor, earlier today, public forum, you stated, "The reason why this lease wasn't signed is because you lost it." Now, no, that's what you said, sir. I'm done with the slippery slope argument. Please indulge me and listen.
Sure.
You said you lost the lease. That was the reason why you didn't sign it. Everybody in this room heard it. Now, your answer is, because we have a different prob.
Did I say that? You're putting words.
No, forgive me. You need to listen to your recording that's kept on public forum.
Did I say that? No.
He said he didn't know where it was.
You didn't know where it was. You never once said anything about the utility bill. Today, this very moment, is the first time we heard it. I know the following. Mr. Miyaki received his email at 7:42 this morning, and he was told that this problem needed to be addressed, and I need it resolved today. Now, coincidentally, the city clerk is gone for the rest of the day, which means now you're looking to go ahead, sign your lease. We will have to wait for the city clerk to come in and sign it, and you knew it at 7:42 this morning. And now, if you couldn't find the lease all day long, what did you undertake to go ahead and ask Gary Miyaki to go get you the new lease, so that you could go ahead and execute it, so it'd be ready for my client to sign?
I would not bring any sort of new lease over. I dropped off.
Okay, and if the lease is not there.
Clerk's office.
If it, the lease is not there, because the mayor says he can't find it, we need something executed. Why is there a delay tactic here? And you know what my concern is? As I expressed in that email, if this is the first of our obstacle courses, what's going to continue down the path as we attempt to demolish and build our building? Are we going to continue with this? Is this going to turn into litigation? Because if it's going to turn into litigation, be advised, we are going to take this down all the way to the path of its end, and you will be a witness. This is absurd that it's going down this path, and it is getting very frustrating. This is your prerogative to cure. You choose not to cure it, that's fine, but there are consequences with your actions. And we are going to protect our rights. This is very frustrating.
For me too, and your.
Unfortunately, we don't get any feedback from you. We don't get a reply, and if you're shutting down, and you're frustrated too, I don't know, go do yoga, go cure your problems your own way, because you're refusing to address it.
I got a question as a resident, and this has been bothering me for a while. Is Mr. Miyaki the mayor's attorney, or does he represent the city council? Mr. Miyaki, can you please?
I represent the city.
Okay. You represent the city. I have a, I have a recording that I listened to today, and it said that you represent the mayor.
No, I report directly.
I have it on YouTube. I'm going to send it to you.
You know what? I know what I said.
Okay, I have it.
If you don't appreciate what I said.
Okay.
Then let's make sure we clarify things. I represent the city. The city is my client. I report to the mayor because I'm part of the executive branch. I also take direction from the city council. That is what my role is. I'm well aware of what I've stated before with respect to this, because I've stated the same thing over and over, since I've been doing this since 1999, all right? Very clear on what my duty is. I'm very clear that I also followed up and did what I was supposed to do, in terms of getting things over to the clerk's office.
You did.
Within the amount of time that I told Mr. Akkuri I was going to do so. What ended up happening after that point is between the mayor and his office, and the clerk's office, and hopefully now, everything is going to end up being taken care of. I don't think, however, that this type of statements being made by you and your attorney is necessarily all that helpful.
Well, you know, you know, Mr. Miyaki, anything I've said hasn't helped me. So what's the difference? I mean, I can see tactics.
Mr. Miyaki, you told me about something before, when Mr. Akkuri had ended up saying some things that I found to end up being offensive, given the fact that I was working on this lease until 2:45 AM, on the same day that I was going to end up having to go into court, and you basically told me very nicely, but you kind of need to suck it up, because we're all professionals. I would say the same thing potentially in this situation.
The difference is, you know, I'm not just a business owner, but I'm a resident in the city. And I see these charades, I see these charades go on, and, you know, I don't want to see it anymore.
Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I just want to say something, from what I'm hearing with the conversation back and forth. You know, I would hope that, as a city with a future, that we would be more welcoming of business development, and, and why would we make it difficult? I'm hearing it sounds, there's some difficulties, there's whatever's going on, but I think this is especially significant, when we're talking about the improvement of a condemned public building, which would be beneficial, what you've proposed would be so beneficial to our community, to our families, and even the economic vitality for our city. So all I'm going to say about this is, I hope tomorrow, 9:00 AM, that contract gets signed. That's August 29th, 9:00 AM.
Is the deputy clerk going to be allowed to sign this contract? Because we can't, you know, just because somebody goes on vacation, doesn't mean city business comes to a halt. Somebody needs to sign that contract for the clerk.
Can Mr. Prushevitz come in to sign this?
No, he's out of town.
I mean, because he was authorized to basically end up signing it. I would assume, you know, I mean, frankly, you could end up.
What do we do if there's a death around here? I mean, we, this is, I just can't believe this.
Gary, I'm just curious. Could the deputy sign it for right now, just to get the process rolling?
And then have.
I recommend that you actually have an add-on, an item, right now, as an add-on, just to basically end up authorizing her to sign, in the clerk's absence, this particular agreement that has been submitted, and to print her name in the area for the city clerk's signature.
And then have Walt sign again on Monday.
When he comes back to finalize it.
This would allow us to make it, to get his process started.
Personally, I think you could just end up getting it signed, because it's supposed to end up actually being effective, commencement date is September the 1st. So it should end up being executed before September the 1st. And if, if it's already been submitted, and I dealt, I think we spoke briefly about this, Ms. Birchfield and I did, then she should have some notion between her and the clerks, the rest of the clerk staff, and the mayor's office. They should be able to make sure that the ones that were delivered are there. And like I said, I would recommend that you, as an incidental motion, move to go out of your, to suspend the rules of order, and end up basically passing a motion, giving her authority to sign on behalf of the, of the city clerk.
Counsel Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the deputy clerk to sign on behalf of the clerk for right now, and then have the clerk, after that, sign an additional signature on Monday, if that's when he comes back.
I'll second that.
Okay.
For this particular document.
Just for this one particular document.
I would say the suspension rules too, just to, and, and adding this, so that there's a clear notion that this is being added on to the agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to add to my motion for just this particular contract, because I don't want to make this, I agree, Councilman, for the future.
Just, just one motion.
For the contract between ALLETE Sports and the city of Dearborn Heights dated, I don't know, what's the date? Well, the date they signed, what's the date you signed it?
The 29th, would it be?
29.
29th of August at 9:00 AM.
29th of August at 9:00 AM.
It could be what was submitted, in terms of that. And they have that, and there's.
No, my issue, I don't want this, I don't want this on a regular basis. It has to be on a case-by-case basis.
This particular contract.
This particular case, we're going to accept it.
I would say move to suspend the rules, to add this item to the agenda, to grant the deputy city clerk the authority to sign on behalf of the city clerk, and for the document to be further signed by the city clerk upon his return.
I correct my motion as stated by council.
I still second it.
Councilman Bazey seconds it. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
I'm going to sign the document. It's effective September 1st.
That is correct.
Well, then it's not even late.
No, 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 but it has to be signed by both people, it's supposed to be signed by both you and the clerk.
And I think.
Or September the 1st, or on September the 1st, so frankly, it should be signed.
I think he wants to sign so he can get the ball rolling with the DT issue.
Deputy uses it for me, Monday, September 1st is Labor Day.
And the 1st is Saturday, so.
Right.
Yeah, this is going to be a, Maz, just do it.
The motion's on the floor.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with, but I, you know, the accusations.
Okay. Everybody, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the temporary motion is carried. Thank you. Any other residents have any comments or concerns? Speak your name, address, and yes, sir, you do get three minutes now.
Let's try this again. 2014, obviously.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, it's 25305, andoverdrive. 2014 started, as I like to call, my life of a living hell. The flood that happened caused human waste and rainwater to come up to my drain. I was told many times that the actual sewers are separated. You got the, the storm drains, and you got the sanitary drains. Well, every year since then, in August, either around that time, or the same time, my basement flooded. And not only that, my neighbors did too. My wife and I are at our wits' end right now, to have to worry about every time it rains, so we have everything picked up. Being told by the DPW that, of course, the very next morning, that, oh, I didn't see anything in there. Well, of course, because everything subsided. Of course, you're not going to see nothing there. But I did look at the sanitary drains, and they said, I was actually surprised at how shallow it was. Note that I'm not a, I'm not, I'm not dumb at all. I know my stuff. And if those two sewers are actually separated, then why am I getting rainwater coming up through my drains? It shouldn't have me coming up through my drains. So people say, "Well, they're separate." No, something's going on. It has, I didn't run the washer, I didn't flush the toilet, and it backed up, okay? I have my own snake. I snake it every single, every three to four months. This is absolutely ridiculous. Street floods, the last time it flooded was not too long ago, and it was August 1st. You have Stanford, all the way up to Dartmouth flooded, up to Andover flooded, air bubbles coming out from this, the seams of the cement, human feces everywhere. Every single time, it's costing me over $10,000 worth of money, well, just to, in short terms, I want to leave this city. I've been here for 15, 16 years, and I've never, ever seen this type of situation ever go on. I've been there since 2001, and 2014, and now I have to live with crap coming up through my, my drain, and now, if I want to move, I have to disclose that it's, there's a flood zone, that it floods. If I'm going to sell my house, highly doubt it.
Thank you very much. Does.
I wish we had answers.
Does DPW have any answers?
I sure feel for you.
Well, this is note two, real quick.
I was actually told by the DPW, the guy that came to knock on my houses, that told me everything that was going on. He goes, "Well, you can file a claim, but to be honest with you, nothing would be done about it." Come on.
Yeah.
Seriously?
You need to file a claim with the, with the city and the county. And the county.
You live at Andover, andover. Oh, Andover. Andover.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. You have to go through that. I've been through it, and I understand exactly the terror. Name and address in three minutes.
Good evening, Zuhair Al-Haath, 354 Rosemary. I have a prepared statement, but after all I heard, I don't know what I want to say, to be honest with you. It's overwhelming what I am hearing here. In 2011, the good residents of our city passed the headly override to keep the city open, to keep the people who are employed in this city employed, to keep the mayor in office, so we don't have emergency manager. And we have close to $2 million in the CSO, which was overcharged to our residents. We have close to half a million dollars for cleaning the grace. Every month, every time I come to the city council meeting, there is $20,000 and up in cleaning the sewer. And I hear this gentleman coming and saying this, why we do not use those two, some of those $2 million to see where the problem is? Why don't we use what we have on hand? The money which has been overcharged under Act 345, and it was never recaptured in the next year, when we have between 2013 and 2017, June 30th, close to $353,402 of extra money, which was charged as administrative fees, and it wasn't spent, and it was never recaptured in the next year, or giving the resident, you know, a little bit of relief, whether on headly override, on our taxes. There is money, I went through the budget, and I do have an engineering degree, Mr. Mayor, and I do have a degree in business management, you know, graduate degree. So we're not dummies. We can read numbers. I hope to God you start working for us, not for the few in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? I think at this time, motion to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
Support.
Motion supported? I think.